Public hearing and regularly scheduled county council meeting Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. We have a public hearing for ordinance number 2024-05, which is an ordinance to provide rules, regulations, and reasonable standards for the construction, installation, and operation of solar energy facilities, solar power generating facilities, and/or solar farms. We also have a public hearing tonight for ordinance number 2024-04, authorizing an amendment to Exhibit B of the Agreement for Development for Joint County Industrial Park dated April 24th, 1995 by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Berkeley County and other related matters project expire. Now, before we get started with the public hearing, I did want to take this opportunity to offer the guidelines this evening for our public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain comments from the public regarding specific subject matter listed on the agenda. Citizens who plan to speak are requested to sign in as they arrive prior to the public hearing. The floor will be opened by the chairman, who will ask each speaker to provide his or her name, mailing address, including street, city, state, and zip code. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the chairman. Those in attendance are asked to refrain from disrupting the meeting with noise of any kind such as clapping. Anyone who disrupts the public hearing will be asked to leave. County Council is interested in gathering the facts on all of these particular subject matters. Everyone, everyone is asked to abide by these guidelines so that the public hearing process can proceed smoothly, and all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. So at this time, we will begin our public hearing, and the first name on the list is Becky Ryan. Good afternoon, Ms. Ryan.
Good afternoon. Becky Ryan, 301 Allied Drive, number 160E, Conway, South Carolina, 29526. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. As I said, my name is Becky Ryan. I'm the North Coast Office Director with the Coastal Conservation League, and I'm here to speak on the solar ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for crafting such a very detailed ordinance to promote and ensure responsible development of solar energy in Williamsburg County. It is very clear that staff and council have worked hard to craft this and put a lot of thought and consideration into this draft, and I commend your work and just would offer a few suggestions to try to strengthen these guardrails in an attempt to conserve the habitat and water quality of the county, both within and surrounding these potential solar farms. So first of all, thank you for requiring the avoidance of wetlands. We ask that this explicitly encompass both federally jurisdictional and all other wetlands as a recent Supreme Court decision has reduced the Clean Water Act protections for those wetlands that are considered isolated or don't have that continuous surface water connection to other bodies of water. In addition to avoidance, we encourage you to consider a requirement of at least a 50-foot vegetated buffer and/or added to the list of the 200-foot setback requirements that you have for lakes, ponds, and streams in the ordinance. Wetlands have a high ecological value and provide numerous free ecosystem services for Williamsburg County such as flood storage, water filtration, and habitat for wildlife. We ask you to consider encouraging, if not requiring, the use of native pollinator seed mixes for ground cover. I saw the encouragement and requirement for native plants in vegetated buffers, but I'd ask you to consider that for ground cover as well. Pollinators like bees, butterflies, moss, and wasps are crucial for the success of our crops, and fields of wildflowers are good foraging habitat for a lot of our rare, sorry, tongue-tied, rare, threatened, and endangered bird species and bats. We've seen a reclamation plan in Florence County for a mine that suggested actually an invasive grass from Korea, so please at least explicitly exclude invasive species for ground cover. This section would also be an opportunity to encourage the certification with SCDNR and Clemson Extension's Solar Habitat Certification Program. And then in the appendix where you have the list of native species, it's a rather narrow selection, and at least one of the species, the wild rhododendron, is not common in this area. Some of these species are unsuited for open upland fields, and really only the wax myrtle is probably the best bet for fast-growing and versatile option that's on this list. So we would suggest reaching out to SCDNR, their botanist, or a native plant society group to get a list. And last thing I will mention is wildlife fencing, and the height restriction sounds good, but please consider including exemption for livestock grazing. And so thank you again for this opportunity. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Thomas Dukes. Good evening, Mr. Dukes.
Good evening. How are y'all tonight?
Fine, sir. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Dukes, 2340 Manning Highway, Greeleyville, South Carolina, 29056.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a few things that I've had forward over to you, but I just wanted to bring them up in this meeting, in the comments. Part of it is because of my history with the Williamsburg County Fire Department, I feel that it is pertinent that we put some type of verbiage in the ordinance allowing for the training and/or any equipment, which I don't think there's any equipment needed, but that should be supplied by the solar company in order to benefit the Williamsburg County Fire Department. They need the training to be able to do it. They have no idea of how to put out a disaster if something should happen, no way of knowing how to turn off the solar panels so there's no voltage in it and so forth. So we need to be able to have our people trained for that. The next thing is, in the ordinance you have here, the 125% of the estimate of decommissioning cost minus the salvage value are $50,000. We do not know how big the solar ordinance is, our solar industrial site is. We don't know what that 125% of value is. Why put a cap on it so that the Williamsburg County taxpayers will be stuck with that product, any overrun on that? There should not be a cap on the $50,000. The other thing I would have on here is, you have in here that it's five years from the initial submission of being reevaluated as to what that 125% cap is. It should be three years, and it should be done by a licensed South Carolina engineer at the cost of the solar company in order to be able to take and keep our citizens and under where we're not have a tax burden for decommissioning solar panels. And also you have on here, under abandonment, you have 12 months. It should be six months. A company should not be allowed to go 12 months and not produce energy and not have in the ordinance that allows them to go for 12 months. It should be six months on all areas where it says 12 months. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dukes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Cheryl Lane? Good evening, Ms. Lane.
I'm Cheryl Lane, 76, Mount Vernon Road, Greeleyville, South Carolina, 29056. Before I go forward, is my brother's name on the list as well? Mike Lane?
It is not.
Okay. First question, will 45046-003 be considered grandfathered into this ordinance, or will we not be considered in this ordinance?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Ms. Lane. I stand corrected, your brother's name was on another list, so his name is on the list.
Okay.
All right. We're going to just take comments tonight unless one of the other members plan on answering any questions. My goal is to just give you all as much time as you need to make whatever comments that you'd like to make as it relates to this. That's why it's called public comments. So this, we'll adjust your time.
Okay. All right. I would like for our council to reconsider the 3.5 percentage of Williamsburg County's square acreage. That is extremely high. If you do the math, that comes down to 21,000 acres, almost 4,000 of which are right behind my house. Okay? The next thing that I would like to address is the transfer of the decommissioning process. If this one LLC transfers their interest to another LLC, council needs to be sure that the decommissioning clause transfers with the new LLC. Okay? And my last, my last comment is on the vegetative species list. Because of my horticulture background, council needs to seriously consider several things. Number one, what is the growth rate of the vegetative matter? I have seen pictures of solar installations in other counties in other states where the bare minimum was met. Somebody goes and buys a Walmart three-gallon bucket. It is one of these, but how long will it take it to mature? For example, live oak, how long will it take that to reach mature height and actually be a vegetative buffer? And this one, pineus, that's only the genus, not the species. So which of the 10 pineus, pine trees of South Carolina do you mean? Do you mean the dwarf, or do you mean the one that grows 20 feet tall? This list is bearer than bare bones when it comes to vegetative matter. I suggest that you look at other counties that have a much stronger vegetative buffer in their ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Faith Truesdale?
Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Ms. Truesdale.
County Supervisor, Mr. Chairman, and county council members. Faith Truesdale, 130 East Trinity Road, Johnsonville, South Carolina. I too want to commend you and echo what Ms. Becky Ryan said for you all being proactive and working to establish these ordinances. I just want to commend you for that, and it is evident that a great deal of time has been put into this, so I'm very appreciative of you doing that. I just also would offer a couple of suggestions, some of which have already been mentioned here this evening. On the setbacks, knowing what some other counties have and what solar companies are used to, I would really like to see, along with several other rural landowners in the state, or in the county rather, would like to see those increased to a minimum of 300 foot from the property line at a minimum. I don't think anybody would probably be opposed if it was increased even more than that, but increasing it from 100 to a minimum of 300, but I truly would probably love to see it at 500 or more, but that would be a suggestion. Also, I think Ms. Lane already mentioned this, but under the decommissioning, just making sure that performance guarantee is transferable if ownership changes. We've seen it happen in other areas where the LLCs go out of business and it's just shifted from one person to another, so we don't want our county left holding the bag for that or the landowner. So as long as that is transferable, and our folks too think 21,000 acres is kind of a lot for permitting. When you hear 3.5%, I'm like, oh, that's nothing. That doesn't sound like much at all, but when you do put pen to paper and do the math, that does round out to right at 21,000 acres, and one acre is the size of a football field. So when you think about it in that context, we're going to put 21,000 football fields in this county and solar panels potentially, not saying what's going to happen, but potentially, that's a little bit scary. So maybe I want to look at that and just adjust it a little bit, maybe around 2% or so, but bring that down. So that would just be another suggestion that I would have, and just also want to note, you all know this, you know they're called solar farms, but we all know that the definition of a farm is something that is growing crops or rearing animals, and we know solar farms do not do that, so maybe we should call it by their technical name, the photovoltaic power, power stations or something like that that they are instead of solar farms. But that is all I have, and again, thank you for being proactive in establishing these ordinances.
Thank you so much, Ms. Truesdale. Mr. Michael Lane?
Good evening, Mr. Lane.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Fine, sir. Thank you.
Well, my sister asked a question, but if we're not allowed to ask a question, how can we get an answer to a question at another meeting or outside of this time we have now if you can only make comments?
Well, that's the, the public comments section is designed to give citizens opportunities to come in and express their opinions about particular issues. If any one of the members of council want to answer your question or give a response, certainly I wouldn't have any issue with it, but the, what we're trying to do is give you all an opportunity to express your concerns about this particular matter.
Well, you know, that's a concern of mine, whether the solar farm that's already being established is going to be grandfathered or not going to be grandfathered under this, and if they proceed with more acreage at some point in the future, will it be grandfathered under it?
Yes, sir.
I know that the, all the papers were signed over a year ago, April of last year, which, you know, put everything into progress under Project Lidl. But I will express my comments about same thing that Ms. Faith said about the acreage numbers as well as the setbacks. I think it should be 500, and I know of one county at least that has already set that up as 500 feet from a residence, and I think it should be 300 minimum on a property line. The county I'm speaking of is Clanton, and they are also left the planning commission, which supposedly we have one or don't have one or whatever, have the jurisdiction they can ask for even further from a residence. So I just ask you all to really consider those issues again before we have third reading, and I don't know whether there'd be changes made then or before that one or not, but I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lane. Is there anyone else? Ms. Eunice, did we have anyone else to sign in? Are there any more sheets? Anyone else signed in? Or is there anyone else here for the public comment? Anyone else here for public comments? Anyone else here for public comments for ordinance number 2024-05 and ordinance number 2024-04? Anyone else here for public comments? All right. On behalf of the members of Williams...
I'm just, on the second ordinance, not the solar ordinance, I was just wondering if you could explain in a little more detail what that is since there is no verbiage other than what's in the meeting agenda.
Sure.
Thank you.
The second public hearing relates to an expansion of a multi-county industrial park agreement that we have with Berkeley County. That agreement itself is, has been approved for amendment in Berkeley County. It relates to development occurring in Berkeley County. It's a part of a tax incentive that is allowed under state law. The project is DRS Naval Power Systems. According to the press release issued by the Department of Revenue, it states that DRS Naval Power Systems selected Berkeley County to establish the company's first South Carolina operation. The net investment will be 120 million, and it is expected to create 58 new jobs. Leonard DRS, which is the DRS Naval Power Systems Company's DBA, provides defense products and technology, so they will be, I guess, providing some sort of defense projects under governmental contracts through a facility that is being built in Berkeley County. It is being added to a multi-county park agreement that we have with Berkeley County. It does not pertain to any development in particular with our county itself. It's just a tax, it's a tax incentive offered under state law and is being, that development is being, or that company is coming underneath that multi-county park agreement. It doesn't have much to do with our county. We accept a portion of the revenue generated from the company's expansion within Berkeley County.
So there's no actual footprint in Williamsburg County?
There is no development, no footprint within Williamsburg County under a multi-county park agreement with Berkeley County. That pertains to property strictly within Berkeley County.
But there is a significant, excuse me, financial interest because Berkeley County sends us a check for those partnerships with those multi-county industrial parks once a year. All right. We've, we've got, we've got one more person who signed in a little bit late, and I wanted to give him an opportunity to speak for the public hearing. This, Ms. Eunice, is this the last person?
The last person.
Very good. Mr. Underwood, you'll be the last person. Mr. Brian Underwood. Good evening, Mr. Underwood.
Good evening. I live at 2237 Manning Highway, which is directly next to where the new solar farm's going, and it's going directly across the street. My biggest concern is just from the statistics of these solar farms going and the depreciation of the values of our homes ranging between 1.5 and 7% on our homes, with my home being so close, it's stated between a half a mile of these solar farms, which means my home, which currently is somewhere around $250,000, home's going to be decreased by anywhere from 1.5 to 7%. At 7%, that's $17,500 that my home's going to be depreciated. What am I supposed to be able to do about the depreciation of my home because I was there before the solar farm was? That's the only question I have.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all right. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Underwood. So on behalf of the members of Williamsburg County Council and my office, the county supervisor's office, we certainly want to thank each and every one of you all who participated in the public comments section of this meeting this evening. Your comments have been duly noted, and we will be discussing a little bit later in further detail the second reading of the ordinance. And again, we thank you all for your input. I thank you all, some of you all sent emails, some of you all made phone calls, you reached out to myself, different members of council with your concerns, and each and every one of you all's concerns was taken into consideration. And I think by the end of the night, when, before this meeting is over, I think we will be able to show proof to each of you all that your considerations were taken in, were taken very seriously. So again, on behalf of our office and the members of county council, again, we want to thank you all for your input. All right. At this time, we're ready to begin our county council meeting, and I would like to ask our vice chairman, Mr. Eddie Woods, if he would lead us in the invocation this evening. Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Let us pray. Our kind heavenly Father, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. Heavenly Father, as we enter into this meeting tonight, we want to act that you put us on a like, like minds. Let us work together, heavenly Father, for the good of Williamsburg County. And heavenly Father, when all is said and done, we hope that the things that we do, even the thoughts that we think, be pleasing in your sight, and heavenly Father, help us all to be on one accord, and let us put paramount in our minds to the benefit of Williamsburg County, to do those things that's best for Williamsburg County. Heavenly Father, these and many other blessings, we pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. All right. Thank you so much, Reverend, I mean, Councilman Woods. Thank you for that, thank you for that heartfelt prayer. All right. Next on our agenda is an executive session according to, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm already going down the minutes. We have our minutes from our last meeting, which was April 1st, 2024. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of our April 1st meeting?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion that's been properly seconded. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion has been carried to accept the minutes. All right, executive session, according to Section 30-4-70A2, we need to go into executive session to receive legal advice regarding ordinance number 2024-05. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
We have a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second. Miller?
We have a second. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be in executive session for a moment.
For your patience, all right, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some movements.
Do you have a motion to come out of executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. All right, so there was some discussion in executive session about ordinance number 2024-05, which is up for second reading tonight, and we will discuss those, we'll discuss those discussions once we get to that part of the agenda. All right, first reading, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. So we do have second reading of ordinance number 2024-05, an ordinance to provide rules, regulations, and reasonable standards for the construction, installation, and operation of solar energy facilities, solar power generating facilities, and/or solar farms. And that's second reading of ordinance number 2024-05. Is there any discussion?
I make a motion that we discuss the amendments that we are deciding to make on this, on this ordinance.
Okay. Madam County Attorney, would you like to spell out those amendments to the second reading of ordinance number 2024-05?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of council. We have, I have some suggested changes to the ordinance itself. The first would be the definition of a solar energy facility. We will broaden that definition and have that to state that an energy generating facility or solar farm is defined as a series of at least three solar panels placed on a parcel of property for the purpose of generating electricity for resale purposes. And an area principally used to convert solar energy to electricity, which includes, but is not limited to, the use of one or more solar energy facilities. It will exclude solar energy facilities on the roof of a building or for individuals that have those for personal use, not for commercial use. I have clarified the definition of a public road to be a public right-of-way so as to not confuse that with an access road for a parcel of property. I have increased, or we have increased the required distance between the facility and residence or churches to be 300 feet. So there should be no development within 300 feet of the nearest residence or church at the time of submission of the permit of the solar energy facility, and that shall be maintained. It may be reduced if agreed to in writing by the owner of the adjacent property or residence. Roads to the facility would be exempt from that requirement. The solar energy, we have changed the buffering and screening to read that the permanent solar energy facilities must be screened from public road rights-of-way, residences or churches within 500 feet of a solar energy facility with a vegetative buffer and fence or wall to be built according to the specifications as outlined in the ordinance itself. No changes have been made to that buffering requirement, except that the plantings that should they not make, should they die, that they have to be replanted. We have included that chain link fencing is acceptable for the type of fencing allowed around the solar energy facilities. In the glare standards, the anti-reflective coating is required, and the notification requirement to the FAA is moved to the site plan approval provision. That any sort of development within wetlands, it should be approved only with the blessing of the Army Corps of Engineers or DHEC. That would fall under their jurisdiction, and so we would ask that, or we are requiring that they provide us proof of permitting. And any development within that area would, must be raised above the 100-year flood elevation, and it must not impact the flood elevation itself. The noise restriction was put at 55 decibels. It has come to our attention that that was overly restrictive during the daytime, that it could potentially be too restrictive for the facility to operate. So that has been increased to 65 decibels, which is, I'm told, the equivalent of road noise during the day. And it is measured at the adjacent property line once the facility becomes fully operational. Under the additional requirement standards, we are requiring that the manufacturer's name and/or the installer's name and identification be placed on the signage on the fencing. And it will need to be visible clearly, and the signage must identify a 24-hour emergency contact number so that our emergency management division and our first responders know who to call in the event of emergency. And I've also included additional language that if it is requested by our county's fire department, or EMS, or any sort of other first responder, that if, if they would like, that the solar energy facility would coordinate with emergency management services or the Williamsburg County Fire Department to provide educational materials and information on, and training on how to safely to respond to any sort of emergency that may be occurring within the facility itself. I have, we have, we have broadened the requirement to include that the, on decommissioning, that the landowner acknowledge that he or she and his heirs, successors, assigns would be responsible for the decommissioning costs. The owner-operator of the facility will be required to provide to the county the cost, the possible cost of decommissioning as determined by a South Carolina licensed professional engineer, and that should be updated every five years. And the amount of the bond would need to be adjusted accordingly. In terms of the restoration plan, I have clearly defined what has, is required for restoration. And the amendment states that restoration shall include how the facility shall be deconstructed with all buildings, panels, all panels and buildings removed, permanent foundations removed, the excavations, trenches, and boreings filled and compacted, and the removal of all debris caused by the solar facility from the surface of the property. So it says explicitly what the company or the landowner has to do to return the property back to the state in which it found it prior to the facility going up. We have, for any project under 500 acres, the cleanup must be done within, the decommissioning must be done within six months. Any project over 500 acres would need additional time for cleanup. So they have one year to get that done once it does become out of operation. And it's, the amendment states that the landowner, his agents, successors, heirs, and assigns must acknowledge that, that they are ultimately responsible. So it passes on to those successors, heirs, agents, and assigns. It's ultimately upon the landowner, whether it's the current landowner or the later landowner. The site plan approval has been changed to just include site plan approval. The acreage reserve for solar energy facilities has been reduced to 2% of the total acreage within Williamsburg County. And the area within the fence line around the solar panels is counted against the total. So that reduces it from 3.5% of the total acreage to 2%. And a solar energy facility may reserve for a period of three years its expected land area amount not to exceed seven acres per megawatt requested when it provides to the county building department a signed Phase 1 interconnection study or interconnection feasibility study and proof of payment of all relevant deposits to the states or to the company with, that they're going to work with. With the submission of a signed interconnection agreement and the proof of payment of all relevant deposits, the project could reserve the required land area for not to exceed seven acres per megawatt requested through the commercial operation date listed on their interconnection agreement plus a period of three years. This would give the company the time it needs to get the, get the facility and permitted and, and working towards getting that in place. It, it gives them reasonable assurances that they're going to have the land to put their project into operation. Under the requirements for the site plan, we are requiring that the company provide us notice that they provide to the FAA or certification through the FAA that, that no notice is required. They have to provide us with a copy of their glare study unless they are a single or dual-axis tracking facility. They would be exempt from glare studies. And they must provide proof of submission of any sort of request for permitting to the Army Corps of Engineers and DHEC. The plan review fee has been reduced to $50 minimum for the first, for, for the first thousand to $50,000, and $15 for the first, $1,000, plus $5 for each an additional thousand, with it going up to a maximum amount of $20,000 for the plan approval and review fee. The building department will be required to review the site plan and give approval or denial within 45 days of providing all necessary documentation and the payment of the fee, and the site plan approval will be valid for two years. And a building permit would be issued as long as all the requirements of the ordinance were met and all fees were paid, and that building permit would be valid so long as work was being actively performed. It would be void after six months of inactivity, and a building permit would not be transferable and would be revoked for failure to adhere to any sort of applicable building codes. And lastly, on the last page of the appendix, I have clarified what species of pine trees would be acceptable to include the eastern white pine, lobolli pine, longleaf pine, and pitch pine. And those would be the proposed amendments to ordinance number 2024-05.
All right. So we have a motion, Councilman McKnight, you made that in the form of a motion with those amendments?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman McKnight to include the amendments to this ordinance as spelled out by the county attorney. That is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a second, so are we ready for questions? Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried for second reading of ordinance number 2024-05 with the amendments that have been spelled out by the county attorney. Thank you so much, Attorney Schuler. All right. Third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024-04, authorizing an amendment to Exhibit B of the Agreement for Development for Joint County Industrial Park dated April 24, 1995, by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Berkeley County and other related matters, project aspire. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-04?
Pushing to adopt.
So we have a motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that ordinance number 2024-04 has been adopted. Third reading has been passed, and this ordinance has been adopted. All right, committee reports, we have a finance committee, we had a finance committee meeting April 10, 2024 concerning Williamsburg County Emergency Medical Services and the Williamsburg County Sheriff's Office. That's yours. That is me. I can do it. All right, Williamsburg County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Gardner met with us on April 10, Wednesday, April 10, and requested the funds be transferred from full, from his full-time salary line item to his overtime budget due to personnel shortage. The action of the finance committee was that the committee approve the Sheriff Gardner's request to go before full council to vote on transferring the full-time salary line item to their overtime budget in an amount of $125,000 for this fiscal year ending June 2024. Is there a motion to, to accept the recommendation of the finance committee pertaining to Sheriff Gardner's request to transfer funds from the full-time salary line item to overtime budget in the amount of $125,000?
Sub movement, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Well, we have a motion, and it's also been properly second, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this motion has been carried. Emergency, we also had a request from our Emergency Medical Services Department. The interim director, Mr. Anthony Hux, came before the finance committee and requested that they take $40,000 from contractual services and transfer to the full-time salary line item of the EMS department. Is there a motion to accept the finance committee's request for the EMS department?
Sub movement, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, all right, it's been properly motioned, is there a second?
Second.
So it's been motioned and it's been seconded, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, both those motions have been carried, all right. We have two appearances tonight, we have Ms. Sarah Goodwin, who is the Williamsburg County Volunteer and Community Education Coordinator with PD Coalition, Ms. Goodwin. Godwin, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon Supervisor and council members, I am not Sarah Goodwin.
Yeah, I was sitting there wondering, I was like, wait a minute now. This says Sarah, maybe I need to put my glasses back on.
But I made a commitment, I wasn't sure if I would be able to make it tonight, but sticking to my word, I was able to, so that's why her name is there and mine is not. But good evening again, my name is Sean Swinton, and I rise on behalf of the PD Coalition as a board member for the organization. And just a few points in the month of April and some statistics about the organization itself. The PD Coalition is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence, and child abuse to the needs of their victims. Some of the programs offered are Family Violence Prevention and Services, Sexual Assault Prevention and Services, and Child Abuse Prevention and Services. The toll-free number is 1-800-273-1820. Directly impacting our community right here in Winsburg County, these are just a few numbers from 2022, 2023, and 2024 that the office here in King Street have provided services to persons. In the year of 2022, this is for domestic violence, victims assisted 67. In 2023, 59. In 2024, 15. For sexual assault victims assisted in the year of 2022, there were two. In 2023, three. And in 2024, so far, we have none reported. Of course, I'm sure many of the council members and supervisors, you've heard about the Children Durant Center, this is just some information on it. The PD Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault founding, the coalition is founded through local, state, and federal, I'm sorry, funding. The coalition is funded through local, state, and federal dollars while relying heavily on both financial and in-kind contributions from general public members. The organization is a member organization of seven area United Way and similar funding agencies. Other requests for funding from council in years previous, we have sent, I guess, requests and allocations have been made, and we thank you for the amounts that have been already given to the PD Coalition. The request has been sent in this year in the amount of $1,500 and is awaiting a response, and we understand that budget is happening, so we, we cross our fingers and we ask you for your help in that way. And lastly, this announcement is for Denim Day in 2024, April the 24th. Denim Day began after the Italian Supreme Court overturned a rape conviction case based on the fact that the victim's jeans were too tight, and she must have helped remove them thereby implying consent. The day after that ruling, women in the Italian Parliament came to work wearing jeans in solidarity with the victim, and it concludes by saying, "Don't stand by, but stand up." We ask the community to make a statement with their fashion by wearing jeans to help educate, spread awareness, and social support for those impacted by sexual assault. Post these pictures online, and again, this date is April the 24th. In the back, there is a table with all of this information that I've shared with council on tonight, and we thank you for your continued support. Are there any questions? I think I forgot that last time. No questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Swinton, thank you so much, and thank the agency, PD Coalition, for all the great work that they do here in Williamsburg County and throughout the PD area of South Carolina. I've worked with them for the, for a long time, I don't want to date myself, and they've always done an exceptional job here in the PD area with the services that they provide for victims.
Absolutely.
So again, we thank you all.
And as I'm standing, I did forget something, prior to the meeting tonight at 5:45, the mayors, Mayor Jesse Parker, Mayor Brown, and Mayor Charles, Charlie Fulton, they did a proclamation signing right before we got started, so we thank them as well for being in attendance. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you all for what you do. All right, so we have appearances, Ms. Cheryl Raye comments on preliminary research findings of tax map number 45-046-003 and adjacent properties. Good, good evening again, Ms. Lane.
Yeah, ask a question first. I'd like for something to go into the minutes, but I don't want it to be a part of my three minutes. Is that okay? Did I hand it to her?
You want to give her something?
Yes.
Yeah, no, absolutely, you can hand it to me.
Well, I'll hand it, this is a petition-
You're getting into your three minutes now.
All right, this is a petition that we would like entered into the minutes.
Okay.
All right. This is a petition that we would like entered into the minutes, and this is a sample moratorium from Calhoun County, and this is for the clerk to sign that she has received.
You want me to sign that?
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you may begin.
Okay. At the end, I have something for the rest of everybody, so you don't feel left out. Okay? All right. Sorry, got a frog. I'm Cheryl Lane. I'm here to speak tonight on preliminary research findings for Tax Map 45046003 and adjacent tracks. That's the track that I live beside. 135 feet to the property line. My well is 40 feet to the property line, and my barn is 60 feet to the property line. First of all, let me give you some background. There are several types of research, qualitative, quantitative, and mixed methods research. Qualitative can be a case study, like Mr. Woods and I used to talk about, why can't Johnny read? That's a case study. Quantitative is when you crunch a bunch of numbers. You do a whole lot of math. How many people think this way? How many people think that way? But a mixed methods study is when you do both. You ask people questions. You find out some numbers, and then you come up with some answers. So I've been trying to find out answers since November the 1st. But very interestingly, there's another type of research in the literature, and it's called participatory research. Wild idea. Participatory research can use all three methods. You can ask people questions. You can look at the numbers. You can try to figure out what's going on. So the next phase of my research is, I need your help. I need the help of every councilman, chair, clerk, legal counsel, everybody in this room, and everybody that's listening via Facebook. I want to do this novel idea. You are going to be invited to a field trip to Tax Map 45046003. And I know you guys do field trips because I heard you did one at AgroAmerica. So that's not a new thing. But I want you to come, and I want you to look and see what's happening in Greeleyville. I'm going to give you snacks. We're going to talk about it like neighbor to neighbor, and we're going to see what we think is going on. I want you to watch my Facebook page called Black River Guardians of South Carolina. I'll post on there where to meet, what kind of shoes to wear. Come, and we'll talk. If you can't come on that opening day, because what this is, is a part of a new business that I have called environmental ecological field trips. Couldn't think of the extra word. But with all the new things that are happening in our area, why not educate our people on what our community and our county is like? There's a wonderful Black River. There is Indian heritage in our area. There's African-American heritage. There's Scottish-Irish history in our area. There are so many different plants and animals. If I walk right out into my backyard, I was trained at Clemson in horticulture. So when I walk right out into my backyard, I am just amazed at the amount of life that is there, and I want you guys to see it firsthand. I want you to look at the digger bees that are in my backyard. I want you to look at the barred owl who calls me. You want to hear it? You ready? She answers me at night. And believe it or not, I was trained by Dr. Drew Lanham, who is a black ornithologist at Clemson, who was last year's MacArthur Fellow. And I tell him he's way too up and high and mighty for me now, but he has walked my land, and he has trained me in so many ways. For example, did you know that Harriet Tubman used that same call to help Underground Railroad? That very same call she used to let people know where it was safe in the swamps of the South to move. So my new business, Black River Guardians of South Carolina, you're invited to the inaugural field trip, May the 4th. It's a Saturday. If you can't come, let me know. I'll do a private tour for you. So Tax Map 45046003 and adjacent properties in Greeleyville, we need all citizens and all county officials to understand the issues and participate in our future because we think we important in Greeleyville. Ain't that right, Mr. Butch?
Absolutely.
That's right.
All right.
All right. Y'all want you?
All right, Ms. Lane, thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right. Are there any reports from any of the members of council? Any reports from any of the members of council?
Just like to invite everyone out to Sutton Park on Thursday for our supervisor will be out there for our town hall meeting, and that's at 6 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Miller. Couple of, are there any other comments or notations that need to be made by any of the members of council? Okay. I had a couple of quick things that I wanted to point out. The amended ordinance from tonight will be posted on the website by close of business tomorrow. It'll be posted on the county's website by close of business tomorrow. So anyone that wants to get a copy of it and review it and take another look and take a look at it, it will be on our website by close of business tomorrow. Now, close of business is 5:00 PM. So, you know, please try to restrain yourself from calling us at 10 o'clock in the morning, reminding us that it's not there. We have until 5:00 PM tomorrow. So it'll be up by close of business tomorrow. All right. I also want to take this opportunity for the benefit of the members of council and for the public. I wanted to recognize our new transit director, Ms. Alicia Wigfall. Ms. Wigfall, would you please stand and just wave at everyone? She is our new transit director. She's been over there now for about a week and a half. We're very fortunate to have her. We were able to get her from the Charleston area. She spent a significant number of years with Carter, who is the mass transit folks for the Low Country area, and is probably one of the largest mass transit groups in this part of the state, in the state, I believe. And she was their operations director for a number of years. So we're very fortunate to have her, and we certainly want to welcome her aboard on the team here with us here in Williamsburg. Lastly, at our last meeting, Councilman Miller asked me during the council report to look into something for him, and we did. During the budget last year, part of, part of the budget was that we had four furlough days for our employees. And furlough days are days that good the government is shut down, and the employees would not get paid for. We were able to take two of those days off the books for the four, for the employees. But unfortunately, we're not, we were not able to find monies to take the other two days off the books, and so the employees will have to do those furlough days. One of those furlough days is, the first of those furlough days is Friday coming. So our government offices will be closed Friday to, for the employees to take those furlough days. Now, one of the, one of the rules about furlough days and one of the policy things about it and that I don't particularly like is that elected officials are exempt. And I don't particularly like that. But what I am going to do, and I don't have to do this because we're exempt from it, but I will not ask the employees to do something, and I'm not going to do it. And so the employees will lose a day of work on Friday, and so I'm going to lose a day of work as well. And so I'm going to give one day of my salary back to the county the same way that the employees are having to lose that day. I don't think it's right for me, for them, to have to lose a day. And because I'm an elected official, I get exempted. I'm going to ask that that happen. I wanted to make this council aware that I'm going to do that. And, so anyway, I just wanted to make the public aware of it as well. But on Friday, we, all government offices will be closed.
Mr. Supervisor, I would.
Just a comment. We all agreed on that when we first said that when we did the budget last year. Council and all of us agreed.
So all of you all agree to that?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Please accept my apologies. Okay. So all, all seven of us, eight of us?
Everyone didn't agree. I didn't agree for that.
Okay. Well, I think you didn't agree for?
Furlough days, any furlough days.
Right. I want to make sure when you said you didn't agree, that we, you know, are specific about what, what, what Councilman Miller is saying, that he was not in agreement for us having any furlough days. And there were a few of us that were not, present company included, but we had to get the budget balanced. So I'm not sure exactly how we need to move forward with doing that as far as those of us that want to give that one day back.
Let me say District Four would like to join their employees and their sufferings as well.
Yes.
Same thing for District Six. You know, I want to do the same thing that Councilman Woods and yourself have chosen to do.
Yes, sir.
The same thing for District Number Two.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hales, Councilman Floyd, Councilman McKnight, Councilman Woods, and I believe Councilman Wilson. And Councilman Lee, are you, include you in that as well, sir?
You want to be included?
And Councilman Lee. Okay. And what we'll do is, if we need to, I'll get with the county attorney. I'll check with her, and if we need to do that in the form of a motion or something at our next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda and put it on the, on the agenda in the motion of, put it on the agenda in the motion of, put it on the, put it on the agenda and do it in the motion of a, and do it as a vote. But again, please accept my apologies to those members of council for not remembering that discussion, full discussion last year. And I do thank you all for your commitment to the county and your hard work for Williamsburg County. As I've said before, and I'll say it again, this council works diligently every day for the residents of Williamsburg County. Every decision that we make is not an easy decision, but we take each decision very, very seriously. And so again, I want to thank each of them publicly for the work that they do to make Williamsburg County a better place. All right. With that being said, is there a motion for adjournment?
Sub move.
I always have a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I was thinking, so nobody wanted to go home.
Nobody wanted to.
All right. All right. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next meeting will be May, Monday, May the 6th. Monday, May the 6th. God bless you all. Have a good evening. Safe travels home.